Hello.
Hi, good to see you.
Hello.
My just correct first.
Yes.
I can say.
Thanks for being here.
That's all.
Appreciate it. Hello. Good to see you guys. Hey, I'm a lawyer. Yeah. Oh, I see. I know this story.
Yeah, I put her.
Here, here.
Because I wasn't sure if anyone.
How are you? Okay. Yeah, you've been right exactly. It's almost done. I was gonna say. Oh. I was gonna say something in the background. I find appropriate. I'm very late, just like. I apologize. Uh, to the two down. The people. The clicker's on the podium. Yeah, gentlemen. Rose.
Yeah, I, I.
Oh, you're.
Um, her.
Perfect.
Rose's, um. Chipling is one of my daughters.
Oh.
A friend.
Really?
Sorry, my daughter's.
Oh, good, good, good. Perfect.
Person who sits there is not here tonight. Sunita's not here. Mr. Bott is not here. Yes, yes. Um, Jen will take care of you too.
What's that?
I don't know how much she would back between you guys. All right.
How's that? No.
Sorry, that begins to buy.
Got it?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see you.
I have to say, I love this blue. It's very summery.
Exactly the same.
It's very wonderful, he's summer. Oh, you're. Oh, I, I will be there next week this time. This is the summer. I expect to have a cocktail or something. In my hands.
Okay.
On his.
You want to borrow the.
It's. Oh, no.
Yeah.
No.
I do.
Thank God. And thanks for getting my questions into depth. No, he's not here. I mean, they're lovely company and all, but. All right. Is everyone here? Hello, welcome. I love this. I'm excited.
All right. Good evening. A call to order the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Metatchen Board of Education. Sorry. In a moment. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, whose role in the voting is just as for all.
Right, Mrs. Aliyevich, a notice of the meeting, please.
I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter Two Through One of the Public Laws of New Jersey, nineteen-seventy-five, which effective ninety days after enactment, January nineteenth, nineteen-seventy-six. Notice of this meeting was given by providing location, time, and date of this meeting, and posting of the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Metatchen Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerks as prescribed by this law.
Thank you so much. Rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
He has advised us he won't be here today.
Thank you so much. Ms. Cheedam?
Here.
Mr. Dersflinger?
Here.
Mr. Glassberg?
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
I am here.
Hello. Ms. Colleen?
Here.
Mr. Lifton?
He has also advised us he won't be here today.
Thank you. Ms. Michaels-Lamort?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Spigner?
Here.
And Mr. Suss?
Here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Dr. Caputo, I believe we have an exciting, uh, welcome to bestow.
We do, we do. As, um, the public knows, um, New Jersey state law requires that every district with a high school have a member on the Board of Education from the high school. And so we're happy, um, to welcome our newest board member from the high school, um, is Rose Michaels-Lamort, and we welcome you to the Board of Education.
Thank you. We're very happy to have you join us.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, and at this time, the meeting is open to the public for any topic. Seeing no public comment, uh, we turn it back over to you, Dr. Caputo, to introduce our presentations.
We do. We have representatives from, uh, DCO and from, uh, Spiesel Architects to talk about ESIP, uh, Energy Savings Improvement Plan, uh, so we welcome them to the podium.
It's on. You hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Um, I'm Steve Siegel, Principal in Charge of Spiesel Architectural Group. I also have Christine, our Project Manager, um, and Greg from DCO, who'll talk a little bit about the Energy Improvement Plan. But just high level, wanted to just kind of talk to you. I know the district, we've been talking to them for a few years now about energy-saving projects and trying to capture some rebates and energy savings and looking at solar plans. So we talked to them about this Energy Savings Improvement Plan that allows us to work closely with DCO Energy to do an investment-grade audit that will identify projects that you can potentially do under this program that allows you to pay for it with the savings they produce. So there's no tax impact. You do bond for it, but the bond payments are paid out of those, um, those savings. So it's a good way to look at potentially getting solar, potentially getting your roofs done. And, um, DCO Energy put together a nice presentation tonight to kind of explain in more detail this, and also, uh, based on prior conversations, put together a sample project, what that might look like. We do have to dive into this pretty detailed investment-grade audit, which is probably a four-month process of diving into all the schools and analyzing all the, um, potential savings and all the use, usage that you currently have. Um, but at least for now, we wanted to just get in front of you, talk about the project, and then answer any questions you may have as you consider it moving forward.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Steve mentioned, my name is Greg Burns. I'm the Senior Business Development Manager with DCO Energy. So we'll talk in a lot of acronyms. If there's any questions, please feel free to stop me. Um, if I say an acronym, please, please stop me. You don't understand, because that usually happens. So, uh, DCO is an energy services company, an ESCO. Means that we are New Jersey DPMC-qualified, a Division of Property Management and Construction, to implement ESIP projects, Energy Savings Improvement Program projects for public entities here in the state of New Jersey. Um, so now I try to give you the plethora of, um, of acronyms to start. So now I'll jump into it, um, and I'm not sure if you can see it, uh, behind you, so you can kind of go back and forth, but I'll just try to briefly explain it. ESIP and its intent is to provide school districts and public entities as a whole a financing mechanism that does not impact the taxpayers. So Steve mentions, these upgrades would be funded strictly through the energy savings of those upgrades. Um, it does not require a referendum vote. It would be just really the board's approval moving forward through the process. But if you take one thing away, ESIP is a budget-neutral financing mechanism to achieve capital improvements and reduce your energy consumption. So just touching on it, I don't really have to explain a bond, uh, referendum to yourselves. You've, you've been through it, got a chance to walk it, um, recently. Take a look at the, also the lease purchase has a taxpayer impact. Again, ESIP has no taxpayer impact. Um, and actually, we just finished up an almost thirty-million-dollar, uh, ESIP project with the Edison Board of Education just about a couple months ago. Um, to just give you an idea about local folks doing the same types of projects. So what is ESIP, uh, the legislation? It was started in two thousand nine. It was amended in two thousand twelve to allow BPU oversight, the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. So it's really, they provide the check, checks and balances in the system. Um, you can see, you can finance it over fifteen to twenty years. Again, the biggest thing, energy savings have to cover the cost on an annual basis. So how does it work, right? You're talking budget-neutral, you're giving me a bunch of acronyms. So before the program, you can see that bar that's completely red, that's your current utility spend, almost nine-hundred-thousand dollars annually. So whether you do an ESIP project or not, you're going to continue to pay that, and it'll continue to go up, et cetera. Um, the middle column is what happens and how you use your current utility budget to fund those capital improvements. Um, so you can see the principal and interest payments, as Steve mentions, some of the energy savings used to fund that. Required by law, it has to be cash positive every year. Um, so that's the excess cash flow. That's the light green. Once the project is funded over the fifteen-to-twenty-year period, the district would be able to realize those additional savings. So at a high level, that's, that's how it works. So what do we look at? What is an energy conservation measure? So you can see, we break it up into categories of, um, typical measures we'll evaluate. So as Steve mentioned, we'll take a deep dive. We'll look at everything, uh, Dr. Caputo, Michael, and the district will like us to take a look at, develop, uh, if it can save energy, how much, and is it a priority? And it's really, it's a, it's a game of picking and choosing what is most important to the district in achieving those goals with the energy savings we're allotted in this program. But again, you could see, it's, it's a pretty flexible program. We may evaluate ten, fifteen million dollars worth of upgrades, but only six, seven, eight may self-fund. So how does this, uh, ESIP, how does it relate to Metatchen School District? So we've taken a couple, um, audits from Michael that we've previously been done, um, utilized those. We put together a high-level analysis. Again, as Steve mentioned, these are not firm numbers. These are just ballpark-based on our understanding today of some potential the real work would be done during that investment-grade audit period. So this is what we call our Energy Conservation Measure Matrix, or ECM Matrix. Essentially, it's the facility improvements we would evaluate and implement. So everything is with a purple check mark up on that board would be evaluated, meaning it would be an option to implement if that was a priority of the district. So what could we get done? So we ran three, three different project scenarios, um, all for different reasons. So you can just see here the ECM Matrix with the purple check mark and a green background. That means it's currently in this self-funding project without any out-of-pocket costs. Again, pretty conservative estimates. We're able to fit in some of the rooftop units. We coordinated, coordinated closely with Spiesel Architects on evaluating, um, some of the other audits, as well as some of the referendum scope that had to be pulled out. Um, so we, we were able to fit in some additional ECMs, the rooftop units you can see, and we understand the roofing upgrades are a big priority. Again, just example purposes, you're not stuck to anything on this. These are just scenarios. So now this is what we call our Form Six. Um, I could take you through it, but I want to simply put it as if you see the last two columns to the right, the net cash flow to client and the cumulative cash flow, that is taking the delta between the total annual savings and the annual project cost. So after all these upgrades on this slide would be implemented, annually, the district would then be forty-three-hundred dollars a year cash positive. Um, we're able to, uh, go after the rebates and incentives, as Steve mentioned, provided by PSC and G. Um, the solar savings, I'll touch on that on a later slide. That's assuming a couple things, and I, I will touch on that, um, in a little bit. You can see we're carry operational savings. Again, just a way to show you the energy savings from the upgrades covering those costs. So project scenario two, uh, you could see in comparison to project scenario one, we removed a lot of the rooftop units to fit in more of the roof restorations at our, all four schools. So you'd, you'd be down about the three rooftop units at Edgar, but you'd get four roofs with fifteen-plus year warranties on those roofs. So accomplishing that goal. You do, again, give and take in ESIP. You're going to accomplish some things, you're going to have to remove some others. So what does that look like now? Very similar, um, energy savings, again, obviously addition of cooling doesn't save a ton of energy and doesn't impact it, uh, at this point. So we have to run it based on some current, uh, observations and just our analyses. But again, with that same scope of work, you'd be about four thousand dollars a year cash positive with those upgrades being completed. And then project scenario three. So what we did is we tried to show one that was a little more cash positive, um, based on our discussion with the committee last week. Um, we did remove one rooftop unit at the middle school, and that was to make it more cash flow positive. So it's the exact same project as project scenario two, except we just removed one rooftop unit. So you can see now there's only two rooftop units in. However, the project is now fifteen thousand dollars a year cash positive. So we could make that go up even more if we removed all the rooftop units. It could be more cash positive. That's the give and take in the evaluation we would go through, uh, with Spiesel, Dr. Caputo, Michael, throughout the investment-grade audit. Again, very dynamic process. We'd have to really be boots on the grounds, doing that investment-grade audit to present, uh, hard subcontractors' numbers, ready to move forward with implementation, but just to give you an understanding of the types of improvements while meeting those goals of roof restoration, eliminating those concerns. And then I just, did just want to touch on it, um, a little bit. So as part of our solar evaluation, right now, based on PSC and G's map, the high school is green. So there's a sustainability map. You could Google it right now, and you could look up your school buildings. It was green as of last week. It changes all the time. So we're assuming, that means there's a capacity limitation the utility has to interconnect to. Um, so in our models, we were only really calculating that the high school could get it. We've done it in districts where we've submitted three, four, five, six sites that were red and got approvals back. That means that we could interconnect as much as we wanted. So we're kind of showing you, one would, I'm, I'm anticipating this to be the one on the left to be a worst-case scenario. The one on the right would be a best-case scenario. Again, if we can get more sites, uh, to accomplish solar at a reduced electric rate, you'd be able to significantly increase your savings in comparison of only doing the high school, you're about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year cash positive. If we were able to fit in all four sites based on the utility's direction, you'd be over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We won't know that answer officially until the investment-grade audit, when we submitted interconnection applications and got that back from PSC and G. So we just wanted to kind of show you the, the range of where we think you'll be. And just to give you a caveat, um, we just bid Camden City Public Schools, Washington Township Public Schools, Cranford Public Schools, and they all received below a three-cent power purchase agreement rate, and we modeled yours at four cents, so trying to be slightly conservative in that instance. And then we could talk process here, and then I'll, I guess I'll open it up for any questions before I talk any more process. Good? Keep going? All right. So the process, so the, so the district already has their energy audits completed. They also have an engineered solutions audit completed. So that's really the first step. So we can check the box there. The next step would be for us to work with Spiesel on the investment-grade audit, which would really be, this is, that's exactly where we're at. We're in between the LGA to the investment-grade audit. If the district and the board decides to move forward, we would then be boots on the ground, doing the site audits, walking all the buildings, counting all the lights, looking at the HVC, looking at the roofings, coordinating with the district and Spiesel to develop subcontractor pricing. So those project scenarios I just presented to you would be more, uh, firm fixed numbers. Then at the end of the investment-grade audit, we're going to evaluate, again, like I said, ten, fifteen million dollars worth of upgrades, but the district will pick what self-funds, and you can make it as cash flow positive, or get, you know, reduce that amount or increase it, but it's just a give and take with the scope. Um, and then we would enter into financing, design, and bidding once the project was, um, selected. And then, so you're, and you're in a really good spot right now, because you probably would be close to summer construction to next year would be the anticipated goal, to finish as much as we could next summer. With that, that's my, uh, brief, but try to be quick, to the point, ESIP presentation. And I just want to open it up for any questions.
Thanks so much for the presentation, folks. Do you have questions? Mr. Glassberg?
Uh, thank you for turning this around really pretty quickly. Um, you presented to our construction committee, which I'll report out on later, although it's going to be pretty much what you just said. Um, so out of that committee, uh, we had some questions and felt like, obviously, this is big enough that the whole board needs to, needs to hear it. Um, so we appreciate you coming back here, uh, at night to give us that presentation. When we first interviewed for architects, uh, for the referendum that we were just thinking about at that time, uh, solar came up. And then when we did our, um, meetings, the committee had open public meetings in all the different schools, and a lot of people brought up, um, the energy costs and brought up, uh, solar there as well.
For sure.
Basically, what came out of the referendum was, not quite right then, um, let's get through the project and then have this deeper conversation about solar. So I'm glad that we're at, there now at this point. Um, right now, our energy costs, um, Mr. Harvey, is somewhere around nine-hundred thousand?
Yeah.
That's, that's about right. Do we have any prediction of what it might be after we turn on all this air conditioning?
Now, I, I would have to run the, the analysis based on the cutage. We, we didn't, unfortunately, we just didn't have the time to run that.
Right.
But now, it, I, I would say it's going to, minimum, probably forty thousand dollars a year annually. I'd be very comfortable saying you're going to be in the nine to nine-fifty, if not plus a million, once it all gets turned on.
Right.
I mean.
And the additional space and the air conditioning.
Square foot, so.
Yeah.
And the additions are coming on.
Besides just upgrading all the air conditioning and all the classrooms, it's all the additions.
Yeah, it's, it's not just the, uh, the, the, um, addition of, uh, now, see, now I forgot what I was.
It's the added space, is that what you're going to say?
The added space is what I was trying to say. Um, yes, the added space for the square footage of all the additions.
Right.
In addition to the air conditioning that was added in all the classrooms.
Right.
So it's probably going to be in excess of, of that.
Right.
You're probably over a hundred.
And in our referendum, um, just as a reminder to the public, we did have some operating costs added in there, um, although perhaps not quite enough, um, to be mindful of the taxpayers, not quite enough to cover all of the things that we might need to do. Um, additionally, I want to just mention about the roofs, because this could potentially allow us, if, if we went forward with it, if the savings seemed to be there, if the board and the administration decided that roofs were of a high priority, we would be able to replace some roofs or, um, fix some roofs that were not part of the referendum. Obviously, all of the new spaces, uh, had new roofs, but there were things that we wanted to do there with replacing some other old roofs that were not, uh, part of the referendum process, and this would potentially allow us to be able to do that.
Correct. And we know that's a priority, so that's one of the things we would look at first to see where they would fit in and.
Right.
And how they would get.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, and, uh, hopefully, let's see where things go next, but hopefully we'll be able to accomplish some of those things that we want to do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. Any other question? Oh, do you have additions?
No, no, thank you.
I just, I have a question.
Sure, Ms. Cheedam?
So I noticed that it checked off solar power purchase agreements under each of your scenarios. How will that be impacted if we can't do all the roofs?
So the, I believe, and let me double back here. Well, just to, um, before you do that, so there is additions, right, that could be done, and I believe, didn't you just use high school, correct?
So we just, so just for it to be conservative, we all, so if it has the green, so the, the purple check mark with the white background means it would just be evaluated. If it has the green background, that means we modeled that in the project. So only the high school is evaluated and included in these three models. If we got any other sites to be approved via the interconnection application process, that would really just be extra savings for the district.
But the costs go up, because then you're fitting more buildings.
So, so no, so the, with solar, the way the power purchase agreement works is you lease your roof space. In return, the district will get a reduced electric rate. So instead of paying P and C and G fourteen, fifteen cents a kilowatt hour, if we go out to RFP, get a bid around, you know, three, four cents, we're able to carry the delta, the difference from how much that solar system produces at that reduced electric rate. Um, so conservatively, we only have the high school. Again, if we can fit Edgar Campbell Moss, it would just increase the system size, and probably you might even get a better rate if we can get those other schools in.
And what are some of the variables that determine if you can get to those other schools?
It's the utility company. So it comes down to the queue. Like, you want to get in there as soon as you can, um, because, you know, if there's an Amazon warehouse or there's another school district that's submitting in the same interconnection application, the longer you wait, the more that gets in the queue, and they take up that grid space. Um, a lot of the times, if the utility comes back, the upgrades are so substantial, it won't make sense to move forward other than just the high school. So it's a really a time of of the essence, uh, type of scenario here to get in the queue with PSC and G.
And that's all flushed out during the, um, the energy, investment-grade audit phase. So we, we would have those kind of discussions with the utilities and, and try to figure that out sooner rather than later. But that's why, when you looked at the scenarios, he was only showing that hundred and ten thousand savings. The two-fifty-six would be extra, like, that's another a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of the savings if we got all the schools. So that was, you know, worst-case scenario, uh, conservative.
That's page fifteen, I think he's referring to.
Is that it, Mrs. Cheedam? Do you have more questions?
For now. I may have more questions later.
All right. For now, yeah. All right, wonderful. Thank you. Uh, whoa. Ms. Colleen?
Thank you for the presentation. Very, very informative. Um, so this is a fifteen-to-twenty-year, um, process for us, right? Investment. Technology can change awfully quickly, improvements, optimizations, especially to solar technologies. Um, what's the, um, improvement, maintenance, repair, all that kind of stuff? Are we on some kind of agreement where if, if technologies are optimized, are they swapping out with more advanced, efficient panels? Or if something were to go wrong, is there repair, maintenance included with that? Like, what's the ongoing?
You're talking specifically about the solar, correct?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Or any, or any of the other components, but.
Right. Well, solar in particular, because it's, it's a lease, you don't actually own it. So the, the power purchase agreement, the, the company that comes in and does the solar for you are required to maintain it. Um, and if they do the, the, uh, the solar agreement for fifteen years, we're just now coming up to when, when PPAs became popular in New Jersey, to Hazlitt being one of the first districts that we did solar with way back when, that's now coming up on that fifteen-year mark. So they didn't have a dime. There was no spend over that fifteen-year period. The company that did it, owned, operated, and maintained it, they made money off what you were paying them from the utility rate, right? So they made money off of that. They also had federal tax credits, and they have what's called ESRECs, which is the solar renewable energy credits that they were getting through the state. You're not eligible as a, a public entity for those tax credits. So that's how these companies come in, and they do our significant savings. The other part to why there's sort of a timing issue is those right now are due to expire, would you say, with December twenty-seven?
Solar has to be energized by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, so their solar company can get the investment tax. Solar has to be energized by December 31st, 2027, so their solar company can get the investment tax credit.
Right. So we don't know if that's going to be renewed. There's discussions about it not being renewed currently with the, uh, current administration, so. And we just did, um, an ESIP in solar in Piscataway, in Sayerville, in Wachung. So similar to, to Greg, our firm's done a lot of these. And so teaming together, we have a lot of experience, just in this area with the solar and ESIP projects.
Then if we're leasing, if they're releasing the units, then we're kind of at the mercy of those companies and, you know, they're going to fix, repair, replace as they see fit.
They would have to fix it because they only make money if you're, they're generating power. So they have to generate power for you to pay them.
And then, in the, uh, so by the law, public entities can only contract for a power purchase agreement for 15 years. In that agreement will be a 90% minimum kilowatt hour output. That if, it's almost like that, that guarantee of the energy savings. It's guaranteeing the solar savings where if they only produce 85% of what they said they're going to say of, of what they was in the contract, they're required to cut you a check for the delta.
And if they were to, like, if they were coming in and fixing things, if they were to damage anything to our roofs or anything, they'd be on the hook for that kind of stuff too? That would not fall back on the district.
Yeah, they can, they can't just show up under roof. There's, that agreement is worked out between the, the board attorney and their attorney legal to work those. We do have a generic RFQ that we put, put out on the street for them to bid from, and it outlines all that. So they have to go through the school district to get access to your roofs and those kind of things.
Yeah, there's typically like a timeline requirement. You've got to give like three to seven days notice of coming on site. You have to have an annual maintenance required, reporting out after what are the deficiencies of the system. So there's a whole structure to it that the PPA provider will be providing, will be required to provide the district for whoever's contracted, and that would be in your, in your PPA agreement.
Right.
Thank you.
That's great question.
Thanks, Ms. Kalin. Dr. Spigner?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and this is wonderful news that this is an option for us. I, I know the finance committee will go into more details about any possible financial risks for the district, et cetera. But I like the term budget neutral. It was very appealing. But I did see a 4% rate in there somewhere. What, what was that for?
So, yeah, so actually, we just, um, we just actually financed Cranford's public schools and, uh, because they depleted some reserves or whatnot, you have to go through your standard rating, just like you did for the referendum. So it's based on the interest rate of the marketplace, so I'd say it's probably might be slightly higher, 4.1. But that's the interest rate you'd get from the refunding bonds is the way it's been financed most recently. So we would work closely with your financial advisor and your bond counsel, just like the referendum, for them to model this project and then to check the market rate. If the 4% interest rate goes down, we would just, the savings would go up. Conversely, if the interest rate goes up, the savings would go down. So we have to, ESIP is intended to provide school districts with a way to finance the improvements without having to pay out of pocket soft cost financing cost interest rates.
Right. But to, just to clarify, that 4% interest rate is within the energy savings number.
Correct. That's covered.
So the net is already including that taken into account. All of your costs, costs for our fees, costs for the investment grade audit, costs for attorney fees. All of that is figured into this. At the end of the day, the entire project has to be cash neutral. Or depending on how conservative the board wants to be, you know, it creates some savings. Like the different scenarios that Greg showed, this one's as, as tight as 4,000 a year. The other one was 15,000 a year. So it just depends on how, how close you want to take it. I have some districts that go right to the dollar, or whatever it is, 2,500, I think is the minimum. Right? So whatever the minimum is, they do that because they want as much as possible. Other districts want a whole 10, 15, 20,000 a year just to give them some buffering, to actually have some savings versus projects. So it depends on priorities. And that's the other good thing about this program. Like, when we go through the ESIP project, we can actually sit with the administration with it, with an Excel file up there and say, and, and the U.S. say, oh, let's put this roof in, but this rooftop unit. And we click two buttons and model, once we have it modeled, it says, yes, that's cash positive. Here's what that looks like. Oh, you want this rooftop in and that roof in? Okay, let's see what that looks like. And you model it. That's why at the end of the day, you guys pick the project that you're comfortable with. But we give you all these options of things that you could pick from.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Suss?
I'm going to ask a lot of simple questions, just hopefully, uh, for the public and for everyone else. So.
Yes, no, maybe.
And the first gentleman emphasized that savings must exceed costs. And that's really the risks with, with this whole thing. So as, and Ms. Kalin asked, a number of people have asked questions, but I just want to make it clear on, on exactly what's going on here. So we have roof space. We are going to lease the roof space to an energy provider who's going to put solar panels on our roof. Is they're going to generate some amount of electricity, which, um, they are going to pay us for.
No.
It's all, it's all, it's all the leasing, so it's whatever money they make.
Yeah. So, so again, if, if, they'll do it for free, basically, right?
Yeah.
And then what happens is they figure out what the cost is when they bid it. And they say to Greg's point, three cents a kilowatt hour.
Right.
So you pay them for every kilowatt hour they generate with solar, three cents a kilowatt hour. That's it. That's all you're paying. But what it means is, instead of paying 14 cents, you're only paying three cents. So the, the PPA company makes three cents, and that adds up to their numbers, plus their SREC, plus their, their, their taxing center.
But again, all of this is, all of this is assumptions on how much our energy costs are, what the cost of energy will be in the future.
Correct.
I mean, granted, PSCNG, the chances of it going down are, you know, are kind of slim and none.
There is escalation.
But, but the, the risk that we run is, so we're issuing bonds, uh, and the collateral is going to be the savings that we get. Now, if we don't see the savings, that means the money needs to be paid out of our operating expenses, correct?
Correct.
That, that, and that is the risk.
And that, and, yep, exactly. But that, to that point is, so we're required by law to escalate the savings amount. So if you see behind you, it's called a Form 6 up top there. So by law, we can't deviate from this. The Board of Public Utilities oversees our program. It's in the legislation. We have to escalate energy savings annually by 2.4% for gas, 2.2% for electricity. Right? Everybody saw, I think, you know, everybody's seen it's going up 17% plus in PSCG territory, 20% in others. So what we've had to do, like, I, we've done over 85, uh, of these projects throughout the state, never missed a guarantee. So what I had to do is go back with any of my existing clients and say, hey, the ESIP only carried a 2.3% escalation. You need to be prepared for this increase in the rate. Because we're stipulated by law how much we can escalate.
Right. So this is just your estimate on, on how far. So, I guess, so we're issuing these bonds, right? The money, um, this savings is what we're going to use to pay off the interest. Obviously, if we don't see that savings, um, we have to pay out of our operating expenses. And they're taking care of the entire cost of installation, the cost of the equipment, et cetera. That's all factor into the amount of money that they're going to give us per kilowatt hour. What, um, can they change the amount of, I assume there must be some kind of like CPI where they can change, or we're going to agree 20 years from now that we're paying four cents a kilowatt hour in 2026 and four cents a kilowatt hour in, in 2046?
Yeah, well, as part of, I'm sorry, as part of their bid, they'll tell you what that escalation is that they figure into. So I have seen, it's not common, but I have seen somebody say, well, you pay us 4%, 4 cents, and that's the same. Normally, they have a similar escalation. You pay 4, 4 cents, and it goes to 4.1 and 4.2, and whatever that works out to be. And it's only for 15 years for that span. So yes.
But to your point, if PSCNG isn't going to come down, if you can buy electricity for under three, four, five cents, it's, it's going to be a steal at this point.
Right.
So, um, you also mentioned that the December 2027, um, there was a deadline. That only really impacts the, the DCO that's going to be putting the hardware on the roof, that they have to claim the credits for building out the infrastructure. It's not something that we have to worry about going forward. For example, to Ms. Kalin's point, if there's damage to, let's say, the solar equipment, and let's face it, this is not a solar friendly world we live in right now, unfortunately. There's going to be tariffs. Mostly, equipment does come from China. There will be tariffs on China. The industry that we have here is under pressure. That replacement equipment, should there be damage, is, is on them, not on us.
Correct. Even if, even if we go out to RFP, the RFP stipulates that whatever they submit for that rate, that's what they have to provide. And if they lose the, and we put in the contract, we're just negotiating it with two other districts right now. They're going to be responsible where if they miss that December 31st date or steel or anything, racking system, solar panels got more expensive, that's on them. The district is protected.
Uh, just a kind of variant of Ms. Kalin's question. So, um, we are, you know, touching high schools, a flat roof. I'm assuming that the panels that are going to be on our roof will be angled, unlike a residence, which makes them a very nice sail. So if there is damage to the roofs from the solar panels, they have to, uh, fix it?
Correct. So the way it would work is the, the panels will have a warranty. Then also too, the other big part of this whole project would be the roofing restoration. So you have a, a 15, 20 year roof, uh, warranty there, and then you'd have it on the panels. I've never seen that exact scenario happen, but one, somebody, either the solar provider or the roofing warranty holder would be responsible for fixing those roofs.
It, it seemed, if I'm the roofing provider, this seems to be, uh, one of those kind of act of God things. Like I said, if there's a, I mean, we just had a windstorm here just a couple of weeks ago. Again, those things are just giant sails. If it's ripping, if it's ripping up off of, off of the roof, they are, I mean, that's a question for Mr. Harvey, are roof person would provide? It seems to me that they wouldn't want to do.
It's a ballasted system. So what we do is we put slip sheets underneath. So it's just like cinder blocks. You have to weigh it down. There are studies for it. There's structural analysis that goes into the solar. There's also fastened, how they have to fasten it, which will be run by obviously Spiegel. So we would, the, the goal is not to, we, we don't want, we're putting roofs on before the solar to make sure you have a roof warranty. So we would want to make sure we don't void that warranty. So we would have the, we would coordinate with Spiegel, the solar provider and the roofing warranty holder to make sure we don't void it pre-construction. But the panels won't be drilled into the roofs. They'll be ballasted with the weight of like cinder blocks.
And so even if they damage it in a windstorm, so like it.
Well, you're, you're using an example of an act of God.
Not even, like, well, like you said, we, some people may call the windstorm that we had here a few weeks ago an act of God.
Right. I understand what you're saying. But anything like that, there's, there's generally any contract. This would be something you'd have to talk to your attorney about. Generally, there is an act of God acceptance. So if you have a hurricane or a storm and it does damage, your insurance kicks in. It's not on them. It wasn't their system that failed. It wasn't the roof that fails. It was literally act of God. So that's a different scenario.
But we're making a decision to put this stuff on our roof, whereas under normal circumstances, we wouldn't. So I guess that's a question for Mr. Harvey, is would our insurance, does, do we have to notify our insurance carrier?
You do have to notify.
It's kind of like you get a trampoline at your house.
Yeah, it's a good question that we would have to vet out. Who, who, who would cover the, the insurance? Do we have insurance on it or does solar provider have insurance on it?
Both. It depends on the, on the situation. But again, I, I, I've never seen an attorney waive that clause. If there's a tornado, a hurricane, there's nothing anybody can do. That falls typically on the school district's insurance. But if they install something and there's damage to it, or they didn't design it properly, because the actual system isn't designed by either one of us, it's their design. If they design it improperly and it damages the roof or, or something happened, that's on them. That's the difference. If they're up on the roof maintaining it and they damage your roof, that's on them.
Right.
You get a tornado, that's, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not even sure you even need a tornado. I mean, we get some pretty strong winds around here.
You just get a strong wind, the same thing. I mean, it's, it's.
It's a good question that we have to talk to our insurance consultant about.
A hundred percent.
And I'm sure it's been discussed with other school districts.
And there's, there's also, like, they had also do like a wind study. Like, we did solar, I did it like several years ago up in West Milford. There's much higher winds up in, in Passaic County than you get maybe in Matutin. And there was a wind study and they had, it changes how they fasten. So they look at weather data as well in the area over 30 years to make sure they're covered for, for certain things like that. But to Steve's point, you know, that'd be definitely more of an insurance question for any of that.
Yeah. Exactly. And to get an example, like Hazlet, we did, like I told you, it was 15 years ago. And knock on wood, it's never caused any damage to the roof, right? There's been no issue. And that's closer to the, to the beach, closer to the water, higher winds there than you have here.
So, so just one, I, I saw you waving. Go ahead. You're, you're, you're in charge.
I, I've been trying, trying to let you have your.
I do have more.
So I really have a very simple question, and I love that you just referenced Hazlet because you said that's a 15 year-ish, uh, long project so far. What happens if the provider goes out of business altogether, given the, uh, points that Mr. Suss was making around the environment not being necessarily as friendly towards solar companies? So who picks up the slack if they go out of business?
So, so that's a great question. I personally haven't run into that. But what I have run into is where the company has sold and a new company has taken over. I've never seen somebody just go out of business in the middle of our project. So that would be something, I guess, we'd have to look at with the attorney and the contract and see how that's written.
Okay.
I guess at that point, you own the solar and you just get 100% of the savings because you don't have to pay anybody.
And the way the solar companies look at it, yeah, it'd be, it's an asset, right? So if, worst case scenario is if that scenario, it's either somebody else takes it over.
Typically acquisition.
Maintain it to pay.
Okay.
As part of the contract, there has to be an approved vendor. I forget the exact language, but there's, if they get sold, there has to be an approval process. The board would have to get it approved.
Got it.
To sign off on who's doing it. If they go out of business, I haven't ran into that either. But again, I mean, worst case scenario, I guess, you don't have anybody to pay. I don't have a strong answer for that. You'd have to look into that.
Right.
Yeah. And, and the reality is, the, the, so now you're not paying three cents a kilowatt hour if that happens. You're saving the whole thing. And then the SRECs that they've been taking, you can now take. So you get more savings. You can't get the tax credit still, but you don't need it. At that point, you're getting a free system.
Because you get an SREC.
But we also have to maintain it.
But to your point, that means now you take over maintenance of it. Which, there's not a lot of maintenance on these things. There really isn't. There's a 25 year warranty on those. There's 15 year on the inverters. There's not a lot of maintenance on these.
Got it. Thank you.
We always do review financial backgrounds as well as part of the solar RFP process. So we're not just hiring the, the shop down the street for the district.
No fly by nights.
Honestly, that's a good point because the way the solar is done, it's, it's bid through a competitive bid process. So it's not just low bidder.
Right.
So you look at it and, and there'll be a committee set up from the board that actually will review each of these and look at financial stability. Look at what projects you've done, and you give them scores. So they, they win on who's got the highest score, not who's got the lowest number.
Right. Wonderful. Thank you. That's reassuring to hear.
That's a great point.
Mr. Suss, did you have more? Because I know Mr. Dierflinger hasn't had an opportunity.
Mr. Dierflinger go.
Just a very quick question. Could you talk me through that cost of issuance number? What is that about?
That's not a quick, I'm kidding.
That's, so cost of issuance, so at part of it, ESIP, right, no out of pocket costs is the goal. There's a third party caveat to that, but. So the cost of issuance is for your financial advisor, your bond counsel. As an ESCO, we can't do that. Your auditor, you're going to have to go back and get another Moody's or Standard and Poor rating, uh, underwriter. So just, I call it your financial professional soft costs.
Gotcha.
And that's pretty conservative. It's been closer to 100 recently. On a similar sized job, Cranford was about 9 million we just financed, and theirs was in about 100,000.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Suss, any closing questions?
I, I just want to let the board ask more questions before I harass these folks some more.
Keep harassing.
Keep harassing.
What?
Just a question on, 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 again, the savings, that's, you know, the key there. So, again, like, for example, it's, it's, um, we just closed the fiscal year of '24, '25. I could go look at Mr. Harvey, and he could tell me exactly how much we paid PSCNG. And we also would know, like, well, if we had solar with this contract, we'd be getting, let's say, three, you know, you know, instead of paying, we were paying PSG 14, I'm making numbers up, 14 cents per kilowatt hour, we'd be getting three. You do the, um, the delta there is 11, and then we could figure out the number of kilowatt hours, and that would be the savings, right? But going off far in the future, I'm just trying to understand, and maybe it's a Mr. Harvey question, how would we kind of budget this? You know, for example, do we, right now, it's '25, '26 is coming up. We put in a certain amount of money for PSCNG. We would put less money in for PSCNG and then use, but we'd keep that money budgeted in another line that we would use for something else?
That would be used for the debt service. That would be used to pay off the loan. The savings would be used to pay off the loan.
Some of it's debt service, but then some, if you remember, if, do you mind going back to slide number five?
Yes.
Some of it's cash positive.
Right. So assuming, assuming we can, right. So if we go back to slide number five, so, so we're going to, so we're going to basically put in a certain amount for PSCNG, and then we're going to have a certain other budget line with the money if we didn't have the solar. And that's the, and some of that money would go to, um.
Pay off the loan.
Pay off the, pay off the, the bonds. And the rest of it, we would just be able to use for operating expenses. So every year, we're going to have to come up with some budget line where this money is going to be held?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
We'll know exactly what our bond payment is.
Well, know what the bond payment is, but I'm trying to think of just the, the extra, I guess, the 2,500, 15,000. The, the light, the light green.
Just speaking of, of where, we've done this with other districts. Most of them keep it the same where they escalate it based on the, the, the rate increase they're seeing, you know, prior to. Because, right, so we, you're going to be in the next budget cycle. So we would probably, one of the first things we would do is we, we're going to have to assess how much air conditioning is going to add to recalculate the baseline. We're going to have to reset what your utility spend has been, first and foremost, because you're having a ton of air, which is awesome for the kids in the classroom. That's the most important thing, I think. That's why we're all here. But you're going to have to reset your energy spend. So that's going to set a new baseline for the red. That should stay the same, and you'd have to escalate it per year. I know typically, I believe you have Phoenix, they, I've, I've known they've worked very closely with districts on budgeting for these payments and have had success doing so.
You know, that's part of what I'm a little afraid of. Like, we do have a bunch of really good space, and thank you, Spiegel. You know, coming on board and the air conditioning, we don't, you know, you're just kind of guessing, or best estimate. You're not guessing, but you're doing the best you can without us turning any of this on.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, right, it should be based, a lot of it's gonna have to be assuming run hours, schools have, fortunately, it's, schools have pretty standard run hours. We can look at the efficiencies of the units, we can use it, calculate it based on existing rates. You know, I'm not the one doing the energy calculation, but I know my team back in the office does a bang-up job. We've had to do this on numerous jobs. We had to do it for Edison, they had two additions come online during our investment grade audit. So we had to budget for those 10, 15, 20,000 square feet additions. It's not uncommon for us to have to do it. The other thing we do is we try to be extremely conservative in our evaluations, so we're under-promising and over-delivering. So I'd rather show, we'll show it to you in a conservative manner, where Michael and the district won't have to do a ton of work for the years after the project is implemented.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Suss, you good?
Yeah.
Got some market.
Oh, Mr. Glassberg.
Did any of your solar panels fly off of roofs last week?
I, I don't know of any.
Okay, thank you. When you say, like, Mr. Suss used the term best guess, I'm assuming that this is a very highly technical process for doing these calculations from highly-changed professionals?
Yes, very much so. And then the other part of this is, so the, the IGA, I know we went through the process, so the investment grade audit we do, we put in calculations, there's Board of Public Utility, BPU protocols we have to follow. They have to get reviewed and approved by an independent third-party engineering firm that is not owned or anyway associated with DCO or Spiezle. So they have to review, approve our energy-saving calculations. And then the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities also has to review and approve it. So that's the checks and balances in the system. It's not like DCO and Spiezle's engineers came in and we threw these numbers together and they went. So these are reviewed and approved by independent third-party firms and agencies.
Do you have projects that have essentially lost money, where they're, where the district is putting in the money because their projects were not currently or not being covered by the savings?
I would say not that I'm aware of. We've, again, we've done over 80, DCO as a company's done over 85 throughout the state of New Jersey for public entities. We've, we have to offer an energy savings guarantee, which we would talk about during the investment grade audit, where we guarantee the savings we say you're gonna achieve. And we have not missed a, an energy savings guarantee to this day.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will tell you that I, I have clients that were just a little bit more conservative. So when they did, to, to the points that we discussed, if they're paying $900,000 a year for energy, they, they budgeted for the following year, call it 700,000. So they increased their budget to accommodate the bond, just in case something happened. Now, you, you may not have, be in a position to do that, right? So other districts had, so it depends on that level of what you're doing. So I have not been told by any of the clients we've done either that they haven't been many, meeting them, but I know most of them are overly conservative, so I'm not sure how closely.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Just one final question while I say final. But, I mean, I've heard you say that you've done this for many, many other districts. Matutian is relatively small, but based off what you know of our footprint, once the construction is done, would you be able to provide any kind of case studies or, or white papers for similar-sized districts to help us in that analysis?
100%, yeah. We just, we just did a $10 million project with Kohlsneck Public Schools, wrapping that up this summer. So, yeah, we have, we have quite a few that are very similar to Matutian that we could share.
Right, for our, our final construction size. Okay, that would be helpful too, in terms of benchmarking what future costs would look like.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I believe Ms. Colleen also had a question?
I did, thank you. So you can tell that my, my questions are hovering more around risk associated with, with facilities damage, right? Because we, we just asked our taxpayers to, to trust us with investing an awful lot of money to improve our facilities and make sure that that, that investment is, is taken care of for a long time to come. So just one last piece of that is, you know, the exit protocol, right? At the end of this lease agreement, if we decide not to renew it, right? If, if, if at the end of this 15, 20-year agreement, we're done with that and something else has come out and we want to look at, look at a new investment or a new cost savings or a new plan somehow, can you talk to me a little bit about what that looks like, what the extraction of, of any of the?
From a solar standpoint or from the measures in general?
Probably for both, okay? But, but with anything that is installed.
We can use Hazlet as that example, right? So, so Hazlet is a great example, because like I said, it's the only one in the state that I know of that's at that 15-year mark now. And the options are that, that the solar company can negotiate some other sale, right? They can say to them, okay, for $100,000, you can keep the system now, because it's still got 10 years left on a warranty, 25-year warranty on the panels. Or they have to take it off and restore the roof back to its condition, maintaining the roof warranty. And why don't you talk about what Hazlet did?
Yeah, so we, we worked with Spiezle on that to rebid a new solar PPA. They were gonna negotiate about like an eight-cent rate with the existing provider, we're looking at buying it out, but they didn't have capital to buy it out. So what they, we just went out to rebid and we got them a three-and-a-half cent rate, reusing a lot of the infrastructure. So it depends, right? Like, if I could, I wish I could predict where technology's gonna be in, in 15, 20 years, unfortunately I can't. But what we're gonna do is put as many lessons learned clauses in the contract with attorneys to make sure the district has protected at the end of 15 years. But to Steve's point, for the solar, in the contract will be, they have to come in with, like, 90 days' written notice, they have to come in, remove the panels, dispose of them in an environmentally friendly manners, it goes with the DEP protocols, and then return your roofs to that, whatever the status may have been prior to installation.
And I would be shocked if they, after 15 years, said, okay, we'll take it all off and fix your roofs. That's money out of their pocket to do that. So I would assume they would want to work some sort of deal out there, yeah.
Because like, for, for Hazlet, the biggest benefit was they were able to reuse, they're gonna reuse some of the existing infrastructure, because the panel footprint stays the same, stayed the same, but the, but the panels got more efficient. Like, they were 250-watt panels, now they're 550-watt panels with the same footprint. So if anything, you're getting more solar with less of a solar footprint, which reduces the risk of it being, less, just less panels on the roof.
Yeah, that speaks to my initial concern of the length of the contract and the rate at which technology advances, right? So.
Well, but you're locked in at the savings for 15 years. Yeah. I did have a board member ask me that at another place. I said, well, but the problem is, if you're, if you're trying to do something now, which, do some roofing and do some other things and pay for the savings, yes, you could wait and that 500 kilowatt panel could be 1,000 in four years, but then you can wait more and then it could be 2,000. Like, you're, you're never gonna catch up with the technology of.
Right, well, it was less in terms of, like, looking to wait, as like, the company itself that's, that's, that owns the panels wanting to swap out more frequently, and then what does that traffic look like for us on the roof?
I could tell you in Hazlet, they didn't swap out at all for 15 years. They maintained and operated the system, and now, when we're looking at something new that the 15 years is coming up, which I think it's up, is it this summer?
June.
June, yeah. Next June.
Next June, I would say. Yeah, the, yeah, the, the footprint, it's not typical for them to replace existing panels unless they're broke. Because they're responsible for the 90% minimum output, plus they're only able to charge a district for what the solar system produces. So if it produces less, not only do they have to pay you the delta from that 90% minimum output, but then they also still had to go back and fix the problem of why it wasn't producing that much.
Thank you. All right, I think everybody's had their questions addressed.
I'm sure I got a couple more.
You have a couple more?
Quick, quick, I promise. I promise. Just, just, just a timing thing. We mentioned the December 2027 deadline. I'm just trying to understand, like, what is the, the latest, we would have to commit to doing this, and also, at what point? So for example, I'm, I'm excited, just listening to you talk about the audit, you're, you're clearly excited about it and, on what we're gonna get from that audit, and just in terms of just seeing opportunities, like, like, could we, for example, do the audit and say, eh, I don't, you know, we're gonna do this, or, or, you know, I'm just trying to understand, like, when do you need to hear, like, are, are there particular decision points that the board can make or et cetera?
I would just, I wouldn't say there's a definitive date. I would just say every day you wait is a day risk increases, right? Every day you get closer to that December 31 date, solar, right now, we're still getting under sub-three-cent PPA rates. The longer you wait to get that RFP on the street, the solar provider's gonna see, we're getting closer to December 31, 2027, their rate's gonna go up. So I think if anything, I wouldn't put a definitive date, you know, I just wouldn't say, well, you know, the sooner the better is what I'll say, just to, because every day is just gonna increase the risk of that ITC or somebody bidding that it's not gonna be there, and then solar is really not even an option at that point.
Right, and we would have to, and like I said, when we decide, like, hey, this sounds great, and then you do, then you do the audit, we, we can't back out at that point, or we just have to, obviously, we'd have to pay you, you know, for services.
Correct, yeah. So what happens is, there's a, there's an amount that, that they work, do, right, for the energy audit. If you continue with the project, they just get paid with the project. But if you stop after the energy audit, then yes, they get paid for the energy audit, which, it's in the proposal, I forget the number.
So, so there are, there are a number of points where we can sit and say, okay, thank you, great job.
During the investment grade audit, we would evaluate, we would have different workshops with, with Michael, Dr. Kaputo, Brian, just going through goals, where we're at, the progress, making sure we're addressing what the, the district administration wants to see, and in turn, what the board wants to see. So we would be meeting at progress meetings throughout the investment grade audit, reviewing our scope, reviewing our numbers, what we're seeing. It's a very thorough, time-consuming process that I think the results would yield extreme benefits for the district.
You good now, Mr. Suss?
I'm good.
All right, wonderful. Thank you all so much for your presentation. I believe that you were able to address all of the concerns slash questions of our colleagues here. This is very exciting stuff, so I can see y'all's enthusiasm as well. So thank you so much for bringing that good energy, even though it's late on a Tuesday.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for your time.
You too. Dr. Kaputo, you got something else for us?
I do, I have a second presentation, we have a second presentation tonight.
Your mic is off.
Thank you. Second presentation tonight, it's a required SSDS, Student Safety Data System report for Period Two, which runs from January until June, so just closed. Thank you very much to Ms. Aliyevich for, for putting the data together for us and submitting it, thank you very much. The data is posted, by the way, under presentations, under superintendent presentations, yes. So the first part is incidences, incidents by school, and we had 18 in the district, 13 at Edgar, and five at Matutian High School. This is the HIB report. The second part is the category, and we're required to report out by school categories, violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, HIB-confirmed, alleged, and others leading to removals. And that big chart is mostly zeros, but that's on the website. Then we have to report out HIB incidents by school, and those are 18, again, coincidentally 18, four at Campbell, 14 at Edgar. We also promised to report to the board every year, the Option G, part of our policy, allows administration, even if all the facts were to be true, that that case wouldn't fall under HIB, and then they treat it as a code of conduct right from the start. We don't invoke that many times, but per our policy, over the last year, we invoked that nine times, seven at Edgar and twice at the high school. And we included in the slides that are posted, the number of times we've implemented those in '23, '24 as well, the prior year, just for comparison. So that's what I'm required to report out publicly. Like I said, all this data is on the website from years back as well, and this is that statutory report that I have to do twice a year. And this is Period One for the 25, calendar year '25, January to June.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kaputo. Any questions or comments for Dr. Kaputo on that presentation? All right, I think we're all questioned out at this point. All right, we move to reports at this time. I do not have a president's report. Dr. Kaputo, you have any additional goodness for us?
Nothing for me tonight. I'll provide the public some updates in my Wednesday morning after-board meeting, summary that I always send out.
Excellent, I'm really appreciative that you do that, because, you know, I can't imagine everyone is watching us right now, so it's nice to send that out in a succinct manner. All right, we move to committee reports at this time. I'm looking at you, Mr. Glassberg. We're gonna just recap that whole thing?
Yeah, it'll just take another hour or so.
All right.
Can I ask questions as well?
You could ask questions, Mr. Suss. Can you, can we bring that presentation back up again?
Brandon's like, no, thank you. Mr. Ulig's like, no.
So we spent the entire construction committee meeting on July 14th talking about that, or virtually the entire meeting, talking about the ESIP program, so we do not need to rehash that. Then we had a little construction update as well, just about the soil testing over at the high school, our contingency and change orders that remain in the project, the air conditioning in Edgar and at, at the high school, we discussed that as well. We discussed the Matutian High School field and the installation of the lights that were taking place there. And then not at our meeting, but after the fact, I'll just give a little update on what we've been told in terms of our most accurate dates as of today. So at Moss School, the air conditioning is expected to be functioning by August 29th. The new electrical service has been installed. Full-day kindergarten is most likely ready for August 29th as well. The playgrounds at Moss, the exterior playground is expected to be completed August 29th. The interior courtyard playground at Moss would be later in October. At Edgar, the air conditioning should be functioning also end of August, August 29th as of now. The, let's see, the addition and renovation at Edgar is expected to be completed August 29th, as are cafeteria windows that were being replaced there, and some site work. At Campbell and at the high school, the air conditioning should be functioning, but it's predicated on some PSENG issues that we've been having. So PSENG needs to set a transformer, and they have, I believe, missed some appointments for that, would be a fair way of putting it, I think. So we are waiting on PSENG to put, set some transformers that would allow the air conditioning to work. That is causing us some concern about whether or not we're able to hit the beginning of school deadline there. The addition at Campbell, expected completion August 22nd, but PSENG, we still need them need them for the power to be able to work there. The playground should be completed August twenty-seventh at Campbell and the interior courtyard at Campbell also later in October for the interior courtyard like Moss. High school, same issue that I just mentioned regarding the air conditioning, waiting on PSE and G. There are, oh, the lights on the field should be around the end of September, but not functional until the addition is complete because that's all tied into the new addition for the gym area and the board of ed offices. And that's expected for January of twenty twenty-six, that gym area. The cafeteria addition is, is complete, but is currently the temporary board of ed space while we're waiting for the new board of ed space to be completed. So there's some shuffling going on there. And we'll update you as soon as we have more information, but that's the latest that we have right now. And again, thank you to everybody at home, parents, kids, for your patience as we come into this school year. We know that there will be some kinks to work out, so we ask for your continued patience as you've been so patient over the last year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. When's your next open public meeting?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. We have two things that are coming up. So we have August eighteenth is an open public committee meeting, construction committee. That's at seven PM in the Metuchen High School Library Media Center. And then we are also at the farmer's market on the Saturday right around there. Saturday, August. Mr. Suss, do you know?
I think it's the sixteenth.
Sixteen. Perfect. August sixteenth, we will be at the farmer's market, not selling vegetables.
But maybe with a cookbook?
Maybe with some cookbooks, yes. We'll be showing the most updated photos that we have and a video hopefully from Mr. Ulig. Perfect. That kind of shows some flyover and of the new construction area. For people who don't love coming to these meetings, you'll have another way of interacting with some of the members of the construction committee. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. Next up, I believe we have you. Oh, you're going to do a thing? All right, Mr. Dierflinger.
Thank you. That was weird and I'll explain why. It was a little tricky to get together for a meeting on July fifteenth. So in lieu of a meeting, Dr. Haresog shared the meeting agenda and we had those conversations via email communication. So I just want to let you know what was on that agenda. Currently, district admin are reviewing the NJGPA and access testing results. Those results will be summarized at our August twelfth meeting, so we look forward to seeing that. There was, based on vertical and horizontal articulation throughout the year, there were some revisions that were made to the proposed ELA curriculum guide. So that was shared with us. There are two text adoptions that are going to be requested of the board. One is for the English ten CPN honors class, switching to a textbook called Accountable. And then for sixth grade ELA, there's a proposed addition to the curriculum for the advanced class called Connecting Flights. So those were two items we reviewed. There were slight revisions made to the sixth grade ELA, seventh grade and ninth grade ELA and sixth grade social studies curriculum that was shared with us. And there were about seven AP curriculum documents that we reviewed and gave feedback on. So our next meeting will be August nineteenth.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dierflinger. Ms. Colleen, extracurricular?
Yep. Extracurricular met on the fourteenth and short agenda, but we had a lot, we, we, long discussions. So tonight on the agenda, you will see that we are approving, we have a recommendation for Mr. Yakowenko to, for a track position. So that'll come up on personnel.
Assistant cross country.
Assistant cross country, sorry, assistant cross country position. So we discussed that. Then we discussed a very, very exciting, Highland Park reached out to Metuchen and asked about the possibility of reinstating the Thanksgiving football game with us. So we had a nice discussion about that and we look forward to continuing the conversation to explore the possibility. The committee was really excited about that. And then we had a pretty substantial discussion reviewing our practices and procedures process for facility use by outside organizations and by the town rec organizations and whatnot, especially in light of the construction and new spaces, just making sure that all of our youth organizations, rec organizations, school sports teams and whoever wants to use our, our spaces are, you know, being fully optimized and we can get our fields and gym spaces used so that kids have the option to be playing sports whenever they can or other activities.
Great.
And that was it. Our next meeting is August.
Nineteenth?
Eighteenth, I think.
Probably the day before. That sounds right.
Thirteen.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Colleen. Turning to Dr. Spigner for policy?
Yes. Policy met on July fifteenth last Tuesday and had, our committee had a discussion around two policy regulations, if you will. One was the fifty-eight thirty policy regulation on pupil fundraising and really no changes to it, but the proposal was for looking at an online fundraising application called School Funder. So we had a brief sort of intro to that and talked about, you know, how practices would have to follow policy and regulations and what are some of the questions we had around how this would operate for any of the, you know, clubs and other entities wanting to fundraise using this online platform. So we are going to get some more information once the administration looks further into School Funder and it sounds like a promising tool, but we'll do our due diligence in the meantime and come back to you with what we, what is determined in terms of using this platform or something similar. And in policy promote, fifty-four-ten and policy on promotion and retention of students, we looked at that policy where there was some incomplete information and talked about what the administration was recommending in terms of the benchmark for days to, for students to meet to be able to be promoted. And there would sometimes be extenuating circumstances. We talked a little bit about that and accommodating students and families around that. So that's on the agenda today, tonight for first reading. And we also discussed something that, instead of old business matter that came up about attendance letters being sent out to parents and the tone of the letters and the circumstance of why some students may be out for long periods and how that letter may come across, you know, as not as, as taking the circumstances into consideration, if you will. So we wanted to make sure that the tone is right and we're happy that the administration said that they're working on that and we'll review that and that was good news. We also talked a little bit about calendar, although it's kind of early, I realize I, I kind of jumped the one, gone at that one. But we will, we looking at that along with the equity committee, let's looking at school calendar and sensitivity and responsive practices around observances of holidays. So that's not really in our committee, but we kind of have some communications between both committees about how the school can continue to accommodate students and families around observances during the school year. And that's it. Our next meeting may most likely be online or by communications, email communications and not, not a, a physical meeting, but in August we will have some items to be shared by email and discussed and updates will be shared in the following meeting.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spigner. And Mr. Suss, finance?
Yes, we met on July fourteenth. We had a review of our insurance policies. I know we talked a lot about health insurance, but the district has at least two other policies and, you know, in terms of damage to the fields, et cetera, with our representative. We talked about pilots. We also had the same discussion on fundraising that was held in policy. We talked about the health region, health insurance increases in the state health plan. And we talked about the energy management plan that we are working on.
That seems like you, dot, dot, dot.
We also spent a quarter of the meeting talking about the solar thing, but I left that part out.
Okay, so you're good. All right. All right. Neff said, thank you, Mr. Suss. Were there any questions for any of the board members in their reports? Everybody good?
Actually, since I'm in an annoying mood tonight, just adding to Ms. Colleen's report, we also talked about equitable distribution of the, of the fields, making sure that one particular organization does not basically dominate all, all the use of the fields, which is I thought was a fascinating and a great conversation.
Fantastic. Love that. All right. Any old business, good people? Any new business? All right. At this time, I'd like to move to approve the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five minutes of the Board of Education. Is there a second, Mr. Dierflinger? Do I have to read all of them? I forget. I do, right? Yes. So special business meeting one, special business meeting two. What? I was like, that is quite the whistle. Special business meeting one, special business meeting two and the board meeting of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Whose shoe is that? Dear Lord. Mrs. Aliyevich, roll call, please. Ms. Cheatham? I did.
Do I need to motion again because I was interrupted by the shoe?
I don't think so. You think we're good? All right. Give me a roll call. We're descending, y'all. It's nine fourteen. This is the problem. All right, let's go. Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries.
At this time, the meeting is open to the public.
I don't know. That's a good question.
Hold on. All right. Ms. Michaels-Lamord, we are turning to you because I may have got a little too carried away here. As our new member, do you have a report? Typically, we'll ask for that, but I know that it's July, so I wasn't anticipating one, but I want to give you the opportunity if indeed you had prepared one.
I don't.
All right. Wonderful. We just wanted to make sure. Thank you for that. All right. So now we're turning to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, this is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. I would like to move personnel items A-one through A-twenty-three. Is there a second? Mr. Glassberg? Are there any questions or comments on the personnel items? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please, Ms. Aliyevich.
Ms. Cheatham? Yes. Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Mr. Suss, finance?
I'd like to move items B-one through B-thirteen as listed on the agenda.
Fantastic. Is there a second? Ms. Cheatham? Are there any questions or comments on the finance items? Mr. Glassberg?
I'll just point out that one of the items does include change orders, which we continue to monitor. We are using, we're still working within the allowance that we have at this point and then there are things to resolve at the end of the project regarding the overall costs there.
All right. Thank you for pointing that out. That's always important to attend to. Any other questions or comments on the finance items? Fantastic. Roll call, please, Ms. Aliyevich.
Ms. Cheatham? Yes. Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fantastic. Dr. Spigner, policy item. Oh, just kidding.
I do have one comment. Sorry to go along with that. Just to point out with the facility, we did just approve the facilities use agreement, the YMCA. I think it's important to point that out that we do have facilities use agreements with certain other organizations. And so for example, is this, Dr. Kaputo, help me out with this one. This is like, part of this is like with our swim team that uses the YMCA and then they use our facilities as well.
Correct.
So just that partnership, it's important to acknowledge that.
Yeah, yeah. We partner with the, the community organizations that we can at all times. We want our schools to be a hub of the community and, yeah, we have great partnerships with lots of people.
So that's another one that just came tonight. I think it's, it's relevant to what we had discussed in extracurriculars. So I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Colleen. Where were we? Did we move it?
Dr. Spigner.
Not yet, no.
Okay. All right. To you, Dr. Spigner.
No worries. I'd like to move items C-one through two as listed on the agenda, please.
Fantastic. Is there a second? Mr. Suss? Any questions or comments on the policy items? All right. Roll call, please, Ms. Aliyevich.
Ms. Cheatham? Yes. Mr. Dierflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fantastic.